7:02 and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for the Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, March 22nd, 2021. Jeanie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Peel.
Here.
Mr. Razak.
Here.
Mr. Carubis.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Rising, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Do we not have the flag up?
Oh, where is it? It's always there.
Not there. Where is it? Not there. I know, we would just go right next to it if I wanted it. We have it. We have it.
It's coming.
We need help.
Can we have one out there?
We have one, small one in sound booth.
Okay, we're improvising.
Ready, we'll try this again.
Mr. Rising, could you lead us to the flag?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now we're moving on to board salutes. Mr. Rising?
The board proudly salutes Patterson Elementary, Michelle, on being named the Administrator of the Year in the Northeastern District of Illinois by the Illinois Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. The award is given to administrators who have championed the cause of health, physical education, or dance in their schools. Congratulations, Michelle.
Let's make sure we talk directly into the mics. The remote people are having trouble hearing us sometimes. Thank you.
Matia Valley Media selected as Pacemaker finalist. The board salutes Matia Valley Media on being selected as a 2021 Online Pacemaker finalist by the National Scholastic Press Association. As one of only 43 finalists from across the country and one of only two in Illinois, this recognition is a testament to the students' hard work and dedication to their mission to tell the stories of Matia Valley. This is the fourth time Mustang Journalism students have been nominated as Pacemaker finalists. Congratulations to all involved.
Ms. Peel?
Okay, the board salutes two former Nequa Valley graduates who recently received national attention. Laura Bannon will join CBS Two Chicago in April as their weekday morning meteorologist. And Josh Johnson performed at the 62nd Annual Grammy Awards alongside Harry Styles. Congratulations to our graduates on your success.
And I just have, oh, am I on?
No.
Yes. Okay. The one that Kathy just read, Josh Johnson, was a close, very proud, very, very close family friend, so I was very proud of that.
Excellent.
Wabonzi Valley High School recognized for literary magazine. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley High School's literary magazine premiere for receiving the designation of excellent from the National Council of Teachers of English. The program publicly recognizes excellent literary magazines produced by students with the support of their teachers and is designed to encourage all schools to develop literary magazines that celebrate the art and craft of writing. Congratulations to all involved.
Thank you.
So I'm thrilled to read this because it's something that I like to attend every year and it's really great that they could achieve this in a virtual environment. So congratulations to all the District 204 high school students who recently participated in the Regional Science Olympiad. Nequa Valley won first place for the fifth year in a row, earning them another bid to the state tournament this year. Matia Valley took third place and Wabonzi Valley took fourth place, earning both schools a bid to the state tournament as well. Congratulations to all the coaches and students and good luck at the state tournament.
It is now time for the student representative report by Mr. Feldman from Nequa Valley. Please take the mic.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sean Feldman, the NV Student Council Scoreboard Representative, and it's my pleasure to represent Nequa tonight. Nequa opened the month by hosting its annual variety show. Students were given the opportunity to share their incredible talents with their peers in their school, with the performance being shared nightly online. Congratulations to all the talented students who participated and we were amazed to see what you brought to the stage. On the week of March 1st, Nequa Best Buddies hosted the Inclusion Spirit Week to advocate for importance of a more inclusive community. Thank you to everyone who participated and everyone who failed out the online pledge for inclusion. Nequa Writers Week is being held this week, giving students and faculty members and audience to share their own run. Presentations range from poems to essays to songs and more, and sessions will be held on Zoom after school hours. We're excited to hear what all the Nequa writers have to say to our school. This year, the Nequa Theater Department will be presenting Frozen Junior for its annual spring musical. The performance will be pre-recorded and will debut online on May 14th for all to see. We're so excited to watch the Wildcats perform and see all the hard work that was put into this performance come together. Many of the Nequa academic clubs competed their season the past month and brought great success back to their schools. Earlier last month, a Nequa Valley chess team competed in the first-ever IHSA virtual state competition. After two long days of competing, the Wildcats placed seventh in state. Congratulations to the team on a successful season in competition. Nequa Valley's speech wrapped up its season recently with four Nequa students who were state qualifiers and competitors at the IHSA State Speech Competition. Congratulations to the Nequa Speech Team on this amazing achievement and another great season. At the state DECA competition, eight Wildcats earned top honors as state champions in their respective categories. Congratulations to these Wildcats and best of luck as they head to nationals. And congratulations to Nequa Valley Science Olympiads, who were this week named regional champions for the fifth consecutive year. Best of luck as you head into state. The return of spring sports has brought back victories to the Nequa Valley Wildcats. Congratulations to NV Gymnastics, who took second in DVC, Boys' Women's Dives, who placed second in DVC, and the Bad Men Team, who are DVC conference champions. And a special congratulations to NV Cheer, who placed fourth in their state competition. Initially, the Nequa Valley Football Team began its season this week on March 20th with a win against Naperville North. Congratulations and best of luck as they continue their season. Twenty-three Nequa seniors qualified as national merit finalists. These seniors submit their PSAT scores among 1.5 million students in the nation and ranked in the top 1%. Congratulations to these seniors on their hard work and their dedication that led to this amazing achievement. As we head into the end of the year, Nequa is currently making preparations to celebrate its seniors at all their accomplishments over the past four years. On March 24th and 25th, the Indian Prairie Scholars Induction will be held, where academically high-achieving students will be recognized and honored. Nequa is also currently in the process of setting preparations for prom and senior honors assembly, with more information to come. And of course, Nequa will be hosting in-person graduation ceremonies for seniors this year. Seniors' ceremonies will be held on May 28th throughout the day in multiple sessions. We are proud to have the opportunity to celebrate our amazing senior graduates as they head into their futures. This is all for the Nequa Board Report today. Thank you all so much for your time and as always, go Wildcats!
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak on an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep your comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by the administration as appropriate. Our first speaker tonight is Jeff Meltzer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carubis, members of the board, Dr. Tally, Jeff Meltzer. I have two students in the district at Nequa and Scullum respectively. I wanted to take a moment just to state the obvious, that the role of any elected official from the federal government down to our local politicians and our school board are to enact the opinions and viewpoints of all sides of our community. Members of this elected body have spewed some racist remarks to members of this community, and I'm looking forward to more facts coming out about that, which is, I'm sure we could all agree, unacceptable. Other members have decided to violate their oath of office by taking correspondence that they receive in an official capacity, post it on their personal social media, and then change that to private, which is impermissible at any level to do so. The same people that want to protest and rant about any elected officials they dislike have the right in this country to do so, but they're the same people that want to take issue with the rest of their neighbors in the community of, per se, bullying or otherwise this school board. I would like to point out at one, I have never attempted to do so and just express my opinion and open for full dialogue, but I also think that it's been a hard year for our school district, for our leaders, for Dr. Tally and the rest. There's no one questioning that. But that's all the more reason that opinions of all sides of our community should have been taken into account and worked together to come to a proper solution. Let's be clear, we're one school district, one community. We all pay a ton of taxes to live in this district, to go to these schools, to take the privilege. I moved here from New Jersey and picked this district. We all want the best for our kids, and fighting amongst ourselves will accomplish none of that coming out of a pandemic. While we're on the topic of decorum and civil interactions, I think it's important to be said, whether it's any members of our board running for reelection, anyone coming from the outside, there's a level of respect that everyone deserves. You have the right, and I hope everyone requests a ballot or goes on April 6th, and pull a lever, fill in the box, vote for who you want. That's part of America, and please do so because it's more important now than ever. But that doesn't give you the right to slander or post libelous claims about someone simply because you disagree with their beliefs, their position, or you take offense to it that maybe wasn't intended. Reach out to them and have a conversation. Let's be civil. Why is it that at this time we should be coming together to express our voices in a democratic way? There's people in our community that feel the need to strike more division and break us further apart. That's not what we're trying to teach our children. That is not what we do as neighbors to come together. Everyone on this stage is volunteering their time to run for the board, to do what they feel is best. You can agree with them, you can disagree. There are candidates I don't feel represent right, but that's my choice. But to go out of your way to point fingers and slander anyone or do anything that you feel is so hurtful only causes their family mental pain, other issues, and that in itself does not provide a good example for our children. I'm just going to point out at the end, we're one community. We're in IPSD 204, which as far as I'm concerned is the best school district in the state, one of the best in the country, and should be a leader. Let's act like it, like a community, and stop pointing fingers. Thank you.
The next speaker is Michelle Schultz.
Tonight, I'd like to speak about the hypocrisy that's going on in our district. At the last board meeting, a few angry parents spoke, calling us bullies for how 204 choice parents have been communicating with you. They have no idea what we have been going through with the vague email replies and condescending tones. We aren't/ haven't been listening to science, or, sorry, you haven't/ you aren't/ haven't been listening to science. Otherwise, all grades would be back to full-time now. There is no reason. My middle schooler is actually losing two hours a day. With the updated guidelines and the science which we've clearly keep talking about/ emailing you, you continue to put our children last in whatever your agenda is. I think it would be a good, I think it would be good to address the fact that parents wanting remote are upset, and as a parent for in-person, I understand their anger and frustration. I have been in their shoes for the past year, angry and frustrated with this school board. The difference here is my family has had to endure this for over a year. Parents are now upset by the decision to follow the science and return students to the classroom, only have 48 days before the end of school. So if we can listen to it is only a year, certainly it's only 48 days is appropriate. Your lack of transparency is saddening. Keeping parents out of what's going on behind closed doors is wrong. No surveys, no asking for parent input, or expecting help, or accepting help from parents who've offered to go into schools to help prepare with the transition, stay six feet apart, but you huddle in the corner. A month ago, you tell our speaker to wear a mask when they're speaking. Mind you, we're more than six feet apart. Yet, you say nothing to a parent speaking on your behalf, who walks up, takes off her mask to speak, and walks back up the aisle without a mask when she's finished speaking. Talking about bullying, 204 school board candidate Shannon Adcock has been a target of outrageous orchestrated slanderous smear campaign by members of the 204 community, who hypocritally claim that they're defaming her name and character in the spirit of equality, kindness, and inclusion. What an embarrassment when children understand the power of words but adults refuse to engage in civility. It's clear that Shannon cares about all children. This is a volunteer position that most would have walked away from due to the vitriol being spewed, yet Shannon continues to fight and act positive change despite these vile attacks. Shannon is a voice for all children. It's because she doesn't align with CRT. It's okay to not agree with this theory. A lot of people of all walks of life do not agree with this curriculum and the ideology behind it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tim Monson. Tim Monson? Am I pronouncing it that bad? The next speaker is Shannon Adcock.
This board meeting, or these board meetings, have been the perfect visual. We have a dispassionately unanimous board sitting on high, throwing breadcrumb scraps down to the community with weeks left of this lost school year. While this board applauds its cohesion, your inability to work with families, whether they have in-person or remote learning students, is a testament to your disconnect from the people you took an oath to serve. For anyone unable to attend these board meetings and watching this stream, you can only see a few rows of attendees on camera. We are sitting up front to show you that we are here to be your voice. From the beginning, I have implored this board to humbly engage with the community and put the students first. Where you have failed, our community has prevailed. Those of us attending these meetings, emailing the district, researching the county health statistics, requesting FOIA's, are a band of community members who have formed a strong bond in the name of advocating for our kids and community. We are a union. Without your ineptitude, our union would never have formed. I opted to run for this Board of Education as a mother of three and an involved community member. I had no idea how many bridges would be built that transcend color, creed, political affiliation, sexual orientation, et cetera. Advocating for our kids is the greatest common denominator and it's powerful. Don't underestimate mama and papa bears. I have been unwavering in my advocacy for fair access and treatment to all of our students. Publicly funded public schools should be open to the public. Unlike you, I have a spine to stand up for what is right. When new complex issues arise, and they will, from post-pandemic recovery to redistricting to fiscal prudence, it will take dynamic leadership to represent the community going forward. Rajesh Narayan and I have been a dynamic duo of campaign integrity and diversity of thought. I respect him, number 10 on the ballot, greatly. If elected, we won't keep the stakeholders at a distance. Rather, we will encourage that the board welcome them in to hear their perspectives and we will leverage community involvement. We will work alongside you to see our district remain competitive and exceptional. We will ask the community to join us on this stage to speak rather than look down at you literally and figuratively. The board is there to serve us, not the other way around. I hope to serve this community with transparent leadership and prudent discernment of all policies affecting our awesome community. I'm grateful to all who have spoken at these meetings, at our rallies, and ask that you now empower your voices with vote for new board leadership. Tell your friends and neighbors to vote. Early voting began today and voting day is April 6th. You can feel confident casting a vote for me, Shannon Adcock, mother of three, number three on the ballot, as I serve and trust humbly for you, the students, and the community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Paul Shanz. Yeah, you guys can switch.
Hey, my name is Robert Shanz. I'm a parent of four.
Can you pull the mic up though? There are people remote that would like to hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Is that better? Hey, my name is Robert Shanz. I'm a parent of four in District 204. I'm going to speak about a different issue, but it's going to go in the same direction as previous about transparency. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. As a parent of a student who attends the STEM school, we received a survey late last year that the Board for the STEM school, of which Dr. Tally is a part of, is rethinking the model of the STEM school, however, without further explanation. The next communication was an email informing us that there will be no incoming third grade for the next year and that Principal Carter is resigning to follow her PhD studies. Now we learned through an administrator from the Batavia School District that all four involved districts, including ours, is intending to withdraw, read close, the STEM school as it is too exclusive and didn't provide any benefits. The premise of the STEM school was never to be exclusive. In fact, it's lottery-based, which will ensure that there's no singling out of particularly gifted students or for any other matter. The project-based learning approach was to be evaluated and learnings to be transferred back to the districts in order to improve education for our kids. I remember talking to Mr. Rising at the very first parent information meeting, pretty much to the day, seven years ago, before the start of the school. The promise was not only the chance of one of our kids attending this school, but for the learnings to benefit everybody in the district. That was clearly not done, as I can witness on my other kids. It appears there was no plan and it was once more a fail of the governing body, or it appears that way. To put things in perspective, standardized PRC tests compared to 204's exemplary Nancy Young Elementary and Crone Middle School are as follows. In grade three, entry year, the difference in ELA is 1% compared to Nancy Young. By grade four and five, we're talking 10 and 15% better test results compared to, like, this really, really good school. In math, the difference in third grade was 7% and by grades four and five, it goes up to 16%, again, better. By middle school, now compared to Crone Middle School, the difference is even more pronounced. ELA is an average of 33% better and math, 26%. And in my opinion, this is where the real reason is, that administrators are planning to shutter the school because it makes them look bad. Because they did not implement any plans to transfer the learnings from that school and failed to reap the benefits. But it doesn't have to. If there was the promised plan to transfer the knowledge out of the learning model into the district, and that is in everybody, and I mean every parent out and inside this room's interest, we would have a much better education for our kids that's already good. And who doesn't want better education? Why would you shutter a working model to hide the flaws of another? And once again, this was being decided behind closed doors because there was no transparency about it. What I'm asking for is open and honest communication on who has failed to act and why was there no communication? Has it basically already unofficially been decided that the school will close because the four districts are withdrawing?
Mr. Shanz, can you wrap it up shortly, please?
Sure. I'm asking for just an open and honest answer of what's going on.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
The next speaker is Paul Shanz.
My name is Paul Shanz. I am 12 years old and I go to the STEM school. Speaking in front of people makes me nervous, but I know if I don't speak, I won't be heard. So I have to challenge myself and feel uncomfortable for something that is very important, not just for me, but other students. I have three siblings. My youngest brother has special needs. He has nine different teachers who work very hard so he can reach his full potential. I have special, I have different needs for learning, not as obvious as my brother's, and because I achieve high on tests, I'm expected to cope and do well no matter the learning model. When I was in home, in my home school, my parents had to fight for me to be placed in Project Arrow. The teacher did not think I was qualified because I struggled with the taught learning model. I did not blame him because he didn't get the tools or training to teach me differently. However, I ended up feeling like an outsider, not fitting in, like a nerd or something wrong with me. I started doubting myself and my ability. When I got to STEM school, I learned that the way I learned is not the wrong, just different. Moving around, touching things, thinking out loud, wasn't shamed, but accepted. I am able to apply my learning by helping peers. I am learning projects based and, wait, I am learning projects based and outside of the box. My home school is in 204, did not offer me a learning model where I could achieve my full potential. There are varsity teams in sports and music, but there are no varsity teams for academics. So I didn't need a chance, wait, so I didn't get a chance to show what I do well. Illinois promises an equal education for everyone. I am one of the everyone. I can't be forgotten. I have needs as well, but there's no plan for my home districts to support me or students like me. Taking away the STEM school is taking away my chance to succeed. It feels like being punished for someone else not being able to keep their promise to bring the STEM model back to the home district so more students like me would have access. I would want my younger brother to have the same chance I have had because I've seen students like him who struggled to do well and thrive at my school. Because STEM isn't only for high achieving, it is learning/teaching model, where all kids do well no matter their background. It isn't selected for a selected few, but for everyone, whoever whose learning needs for me, or like me, who do not learn well in traditional models. Thank you.
Anna? Anna Shanz? The next speaker is Rajesh Narayan.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Rajesh Narayan and I'm running for the school board 204. But I'm here today as a person and not as a candidate. I'm not a politician. Until two months ago, I had a very private life, and now my life has turned upside down. Let me say that as a minority Let me say that as a minority myself, I laud the, I laud the goal of diversity, inclusion, and equity. And I know Shannon Adcock also strongly believes in it. I would not have allied with her if we did not agree. As a minority, diversity, equity, and inclusion is very important for me. And before I allied with Shannon, we had that discussion, and we are on the same page. So any assertions on her is, I don't believe in that. As a society, we have come to such a pass that a disagreement is taken as racism. A cancel culture has taken place, taken hold, and any debate is actively suppressed. I grew up in an environment where debate was encouraged, and we were taught to expose ourselves to ideas that we didn't agree with and then make an objective decision after all things considered. I know what racism is, and I have been subjected to it. My lived reality is my own and different. Racism is when a person disparages your entire race for no reason, no trigger. Just a comment made in passing. When I decided to run for the office, I was advised to speak with all the board members to get to know how the board works. I emailed all the board members and took phone appointment. Overall, it was a very pleasant experience. But one of the board members made a statement that left me aghast. I'm not going to talk about the statement right now, nor the person. I don't want to inject any negativity in the elections. I do plan to talk about it after April 6th. And when I do go public with it, I would like that member to resign. When that statement was made, I couldn't react then. I was in such, I was in such a shock that on this day and age, someone would make a statement that blatant. I tell this story today because we are discussing racism. Otherwise, I didn't plan to talk about it until after the elections. 204 is one of the best school districts in U.S., and this board should not have a place for a blatantly racist person. You know who you are. You could quietly resign, or let's have that discussion after the elections are over. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. The next speaker is Leslie Markle.
Is it okay if I put my mask down?
Please don't.
No? Okay. Or just leave it up? Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. So, dear valued board members, I am here to voice my adamant opposition to the closing of the John C. Denham STEM Partnership School. It has been brought to my attention that this is a looming consideration on the board's agenda. This is not a simple outcry from parents who might be resistant to change. This is opposing the dissolution of an incredibly special school. Our STEM school is a school that unites young people who would have never otherwise met, a school that quite literally brings, brings different communities together, and a school that provides an uninterrupted safe haven for accelerated learning to flourish, the latter of which is quite priceless. The STEM school, while young, has left a lasting impact on each of its graduates and provides much more than further instruction, a tangible record to be used for admittance and further accelerated programs, immersion in a culture of acceleration, high expectations, and prestige, and it offers kids firsthand exposure to a great university so they may come face-to-face with the possibility of higher learning themselves. They can imagine later attending in college instead of college sitting in their minds as a benign, abstract concept in which they cannot relate. As the mother of a third grader that has a 504 for ADHD, this school has been a blessing. My son really enjoyed kindergarten at McCarty and did well in kindergarten because it's more hands-on approach. However, in first and second grades, he struggled because he was expected to sit most of the day, and the standard curriculum model did not work for him. Although his teachers were wonderful and extremely accommodating, it was still challenging for him to sit and focus all day. For him, this disillusionment with the education system itself, these sentiments can color one's attitudes and outlook into adulthood and directly affects the choices one makes on a daily basis. My son is a very kinesthetic learner, and the STEM model is perfect for him and other children like him. If there should be a decision made, make one that expands the program or that adds a hybrid model of STEM classes within the four districts. Whatever you do, do not remove opportunities from our children during this time in their lives where fortuitous learning intervention can have the utmost lasting impact on their entire lives. How do you close something that helps so many and hurts nobody? These children are currently in the STEM school, would not only be hurt academically, but their mental health would also be negatively affected as they would be expected to return to their home schools, which, for most of them, they have not attended in many years. Does the district want to be accountable for this? Dissolving this school would have greater implications for some students and others, and that is no secret to any parents from any district. It sends the message of reinforcing unequal playing fields, where lottery and magnet schools have become progressive steps to equalize the education landscape. Moreover, without a solid plan, students who have become used, oh, sorry. I would just like to finish. We, as parents and taxpayers, are hoping that you listen to our concerns and address them. We feel like there has been a lack of transparency, and we only found out about the possibility to close a school after the 2021 school year because it was mentioned in another district's board meeting, which is not fair. So we are begging for transparency from here on out and also for our voices to be heard as advocates for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maria Berkeley Clement. The next speaker is Kewana Bolreese. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm slow.
I missed it. My bad.
And I'm short. But I wore this really bright shirt so you could see me, so.
I apologize.
No worries. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here with some of my fellow parents from District 204 who have students at the John C. Denham STEM Partnership School. And we're very concerned about the lack of transparency that we are hearing, finding out the hard way through other districts about the upcoming idea to close the STEM school and, after the next school year. We received a letter on the 19th of January stating that there would be no more incoming students and that it was going to be reviewed by the board, the governing board, to ensure collaboration for an improvement of the STEM model and that we would be kept abreast of everything that was going hap, going to happen in any developments. However, no meeting minutes have been published. And the only reason, as my other parents or families have said, that we found out about it all is because District 101 Batavia actually said in writing, "Yeah, all the boards are doing it. We're all going to dissolve in request to withdraw from the school after the next school year." The, the logic behind this is baffling. It's so disturbing to think that, you know, closing the school, which doesn't hurt or doesn't help anybody, just hurts the kids that are already there and hurts the kids that have the opportunity to possibly go in the future. It, it, it doesn't improve anything for the students and staff currently. It doesn't further the partnerships and collaboration that the STEM school was founded on. It doesn't provide chances for any exponential growth or innovation. Instead, it just destroys those opportunities for many children who otherwise wouldn't have access to them. An immense effort was undertaken by our legislators and other leaders to make this school a reality. It provided an incredible opportunity for students to be able to think independently, sometimes without a safety net, and realize the potential not easily accessible within the boundaries of a normal school environment. Sorry. However, the STEM model works. But somewhere along the line, it wasn't brought back to our district in a meaningful way so that you could take advantage of the learning opportunities to share with our, our kids here at 204. And there's so much more to this than just phasing out of school. It, it's the continuation of each local district sticking to an outdated educational model that needs to evolve. We talk about growth mindset. We talk about how our kids are, are going to survive and be thinkers versus telling them what to think. The STEM school gives them that opportunity. And knowing that, you know, not every school building could possibly just be transformed with the amenities that are there or collaborate with the business partners that are in place, the magic of the STEM school itself is easily transferable. It's about making lessons more than hands-on lectures, and it's about helping our students to be more than what they are today and making sure that that opportunity stays in place for everyone. So we ask you to be transparent. Here are, please, keep the STEM school open. Listen to our ideas, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kewana Bolreese.
Good evening, President Rezak and Superintendent Tally and members of the District 204 School Board. My name is Kewana Bolreese, and I am the Chair of the DuPage County NAACP Education Committee. It has come to our attention of the DuPage County NAACP and President Michael Childress that someone has been disseminating information to the community via social media, media, implying that the NAACP is in some way in support of a candidate's views or perspectives. I am here to dispel this misinformation and to share with you our position. The National Association for the Advancement of Color People is a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit civil rights organization founded in 1909 as an interrational endeavor. Its mission is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons and to eliminate race-based discrimination. Our organization is nonpartisan and does not endorse candidates or political parties or engage in direct campaigning. Let me repeat that. The NAACP is a nonpartisan organization and does not endorse candidates or political parties or engage in direct campaigning. Our organization has numerous committees that carry out our mission's work. The Education Committee is just one of approximately 19 current standing committees. Over the past month, we have held numerous school board candidate forums, which are designed to provide public insight into the qualifications and platforms of the current candidates. On Saturday, March 13th, our committee held a virtual candidate forum for District 204. The following candidates were present: Shannon Adcock, Susan Taylor Demming, Lori Donahue, Allison Fostick, Robert O. Harris, Sava Heather, Supna Jain, Marina Kolsat, Rajesh Narayan, and Kara Sakaria. These candidates were asked the same questions regarding their views on education and were given an equal time to express these views. At one point during this forum, a candidate made claims about an incident that he described as outright racism aimed at him by a current board member whom he did not name. He exhibited an emotional reaction while making the statement, which was neither questioned by our committee, nor did we ask that he elaborate further about the alleged incident. Though DuPage NAACP has not, nor will we engage in express accounts of racism by individuals without the incident being substantiated. As Chair of the DuPage NAACP Education Committee and Lead Moderator of the Forum, I simply acknowledge and empathize with the candidate's distress and would do so for anyone making such claims and indicated that it raises the emotions and correlated to the effects that racism has on the social, emotional health of our children. We have a longstanding and a historical relationship working with District 204, the administration, and the parent groups to ensure an equitable and equal, that all students have equitable or equal opportunities, especially for Black and Brown students due to the history of racism and implicit bias in this country. We will continue to champion a culturally responsive district, a cult that has, implements culturally responsive practices where all children feel accepted and work to eliminate discriminatory practices in the public's education. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to bring clarity to this issue.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Asafani Obed.
Hello. My name is Asafani Obed Horton.
Can I ask you to wear your mask, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I have four children. I started a petition that has garnered over 1,000 signatures in support of Shannon Adcock withdrawing from the race for her attacks against promoters of inclusivity, her willing unwillingness to have critical conversations with those who have opposing views, and her lack of understanding of racial microaggressions. The blatant racist remarks left on my petition by one of Shannon's supporters further supports the need to continue to have these hard conversations. This district gets its funding from families that live here. And if families do not feel welcomed, we will lose funding. And that affects everything. It affects our teachers. It affects our students, sports programs, and technology programs. A school board member is supposed to support teachers, students, and families. Why would anyone suggest I open my own charter school for wanting a diverse and inclusive environment? I pay taxes in this district as well. The role of a school board member is to observe the integrity. The role is not to exclude people. This is not a paid position. One must ask, what is the intention as a school board member if one cannot support all students? I want to share some comments that were left on my petition. I feel it's important to call it out. We should get a petition going against car makers. Did you know the most popular car color is white? I bet even some of you drive white cars. I just had a thought. You know how kids use notebooks? Notebooks with white paper? Talk about racist. Let's start a petition to change the color of notebooks. Who's with me? The word racist has been so watered down by all of you. You steal from victims of real racism, past and present. Asafani is the Rosa Parks, and you are all modern-day freedom riders. Standing up against someone who wants race completely removed from schools would make MLK proud. Keep up the good work. I am going to stop there. That is just a few of the comments that were left on my petition that are deeply concerning. I also want to address why it is problematic to tell an African-American woman to start her own charter school. The history of historically Black colleges and universities was started because Black people did not have a place for higher education. I attended Dillard University in New Orleans, Louisiana, which is a historically Black- the 19th century to provide undergraduate and graduate-level educational opportunities to people of African descent. Black students were unwelcome at existing public and private institutions of higher education, even after passing, even after the passing of specific legislation resulting in a lack of higher education opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I am going to roll into public comment on agenda items without reading the statement that we traditionally read. The next public speaker is Mark Winters. Mark? Yep, thank you.
My name is Mark Winters. I'm pastor here in Naperville, and I feel like I just got brought to church. Thank you. Thank you all for allowing me a few minutes to speak to you. I am a pastor, as I said, here in Naperville. I'm a parent of two still Bulldogs and one Owen Owl. I feel compelled to speak tonight because I want to thank you for the Herculean efforts you, the administrators, teachers, and staff of 204 have put in this year. A few loud but isolated voices have become inexcusably aggressive, threatening you and some of our hard-working teachers rather than recognizing the reality of the situation that we are in. This has been the hardest year educators and school board members have ever seen. There have been evolving recommendations from the CDC, IDPH, ISBE. There have been parents out of work, parents working from home stressfully trying to keep our kids on track. There have been demands to continue, things like IAR testing and complex logistics about how or whether it's even possible to maintain safe physical distancing. There are ongoing budget limitations and a teacher shortage, all in the midst of a pandemic in which each of us is trying to keep ourselves and our families healthy. Decades from now, no one is going to ask our kids what their test scores were or whether they think they fell behind in science or social studies. People will be interested in what it was like to live through this pandemic. Our kids are going to remember the new puppies or kittens their parents finally let them get. They're going to remember, "You're on mute," and "Turn your video on, please," and the walks or bike rides outside with their families. They're going to remember counting to 20 when washing their hands and how we all had to learn how to communicate with our eyes while our mouths and hopefully noses were covered with a mask. Please know, I see the incredible efforts that you've put in, trying for all you're worth to keep going in the midst of this storm. I see the teachers relearning how to teach, trying desperately to keep the attention of our eight-year-old who has so many more interesting things distracting him in his bedroom. I see the art and music teachers creating something out of nothing in order to keep our kids learning ways to express beauty. I see PE teachers trying to keep their bodies active. I see a new superintendent, a difficult job in the best of times, facing this storm. I have not always agreed with the decisions and plans that have come down. I have wished for more outside-the-box thinking about how we can be more creative with this time, but those kinds of disagreements are always going to be there. Far more important is that we, as a community, owe you a tremendous amount of gratitude. We our teachers and staff a tremendous amount of gratitude. You all deserve a stadium of people stomping their feet and cheering at the top of their lungs like you won the World Series. We can't do that and maintain a physical distance, but you all deserve that level of gratitude, that level of praise for getting us through this year. Please listen and know that I speak for many when I say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brad Watcher.
On Friday, March 19th, a group of parents from District 204, including myself, filed a lawsuit against this school board and Superintendent Tally in the 18th Circuit Court. We allege that over the last year, this board has engaged in a coordinated effort to cover up COVID-19 planning as it relates to school reopening in violation of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act. As you well know, the intent of the Illinois Open Meetings Act is to protect the citizen's right to know how the public's business is being conducted. We believe that you have deliberately kept your positions on COVID policy secret and violated the law through the use of inappropriate closed executive session like the one preceding this open meeting, and private deliberations via electronic means outside the regularly-scheduled public board meetings in an attempt to avoid public criticism and accountability. Just look at the latest Illinois School Board and Illinois Department of Health guidance. It came out after the last public board meeting, yet changes to reopening plans have already been made. Tonight, you will simply rubber stamp those changes made behind closed doors without representing the community in this public meeting. I personally filed three Freedom of Information Act requests to obtain your electronic communications. Each of them was denied because the district said that the volume of these electronic communications were so large that it was deemed to be an undue burden to put the records together. This alone should tell you that there's a problem. There should not be thousands of emails exchanged between these board members when you were elected to represent the public in open sessions. The public deserves to know your views on important issues, see you debate, and vote right here in a public forum. Instead, you have avoided letting your positions be known, and as a result, this board is now the least transparent it has been for years. You are elected as representatives of the district, and yet we have not seen you vote on any COVID-related policy since August. With board members Lori Donahue and Susan Taylor Demming now running for reelection, you desperately want to distance yourself from the frustration of parents and avoid accountability for your actions or lack thereof. Almost finished. The state affairs did not happen by accident. Parents have long known that Dr. Tally was involved in a major cover-up of grade fixing scandal that in his last position at Prince George's County, Maryland. I would suggest that he brought a culture of secrecy and lack of committee engagement to District 204. We've all seen the results. I encourage everyone watching this board meeting to go to 204choice.com to learn more about this lawsuit and the history of Dr. Tally before joining this district so that you can understand the lack of transparency that we've all witnessed over these many months. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marian Banks.
Good evening, Dr. Tally, school board members, and President Rezak. I first wanted to thank Dr. Tally for the update last week welcoming students back to five days a week in-person learning. It is exciting to see things moving in the right direction. Thank you for continuing to review the revised guidance from the public health officials and executing plans in the safest way possible for all students. I also wanted to thank our principals, teachers, support staff, who all have gone to incredible lengths to assist students during this difficult time. We know it has not been easy. We thank you for keeping hope. We see your hard work. We support you and sincerely appreciate you. Lastly, I wanted to touch on upcoming elections, which are April 6th. I urge all parents to thoroughly research all candidates before voting. PDAC shared a communication recently that I thought was excellent. In the communication, it stated how we want school board members who are willing to listen to all stakeholders, who believe in equity and education excellence for all students, someone who can work together with others, school board members willing to build bridges and reflect that sentiment and policy, and school board members who treat all the people they represent with compassion and dignity. Last week, a candidate was asked about cultural response teaching and quoted as saying, "Maybe you should look into starting your own chartered institution that could fulfill the culturally-responsive teaching pedigree." It could charge tuition and welcome families who want that full-time social justice and race-based curriculum. Just for clarification, let me explain the difference between social justice, race-based curriculum, and culturally-responsive teaching. Culturally-responsive teaching helps create environments, curricula, and instructional method that validates and reflects the diversity, identities, and experiences of all students. It also sends the message that educators value all students and that multiculturalism is an asset. Sarita Hammond, a former classroom English teacher and professor at St. Mary College in California, explained the misconception about culturally-responsive teaching. Multicultural education is a celebration of diversity, what we usually see in schools, that does not have anything to do with instruction. Social justice education is about building a lens for students to look at the world and seeing where things aren't fair or where injustices exist. Culturally-responsive teaching is about building the learning capacity of individual students. There is a focus of leverage, the affective and the cognitive scaffolding that students bring with them. The simplest way to judge whether your teaching is culturally-responsive is whether your diverse students, students of color, English language learners, immigrant students, are learning. If they are not succeeding academically within your classroom norms, your approach might need to be more culturally responsive. We value diversity in this community. We value diversity in our schools, and we want leaders to do the same, especially on a school board. If you are current candidate and you share a different sentiment, then this may not be the position for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Linda.
Good evening. I want to first thank all of you. There's a quote by John Maxwell that says, "A leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way." I want to thank this school board for being just that during this time of crisis. You have shown a steady hand of leadership. I want to thank you for your patience. You've acquired the best science available, built a strategy around that science, built stage gates and flexibility, all because you cared about the health of our children, faculty, staff, administrators, and everyone else involved in the school teaching process. Thank you. Thank you for your discipline, your discipline to process, a rigorous and robust process, one in which you literally held the hands of 27,000 students and walked us through a time when we shut the school down, learned, reopened, initiated remote learning, built an infrastructure system around that including technology and process, continued to learn, make it better, bring us back for a couple of days, then four days, then five days. A good, rigorous process where you changed your ways based on the science that was available. I want to thank you for your decisiveness. Your decisions were clear and executable. Regardless if we agree with them or not, they were crystal clear, and you delivered upon your promise every step of the way while being flexible to the science available and making decisions based on that. Thank you. I want to thank you because I think you've also been an excellent example to the candidates, candidates who are currently running for the school board. You have shown professionalism, strategic thinking, thoughtfulness, mature interactions even during times of disagreement. You've shown selflessness, and most importantly perhaps, you've exhibited respectful engagement. You have not succumbed to what we've seen even on this mic. You've not succumbed to emotional banter that's rooted in selfishness that's often manifested in the form of childish interactions, impetuous decision-making, reactionary thinking, unsubstantiated lawsuits, disrespectful behavior, selfishness, microaggressions, and even bullying. Thank you for being an example for future school boards to come. Thank you for leading the way because you are also being an example to our children. You have shown respectful behavior. Manners matter. And thank you for guiding this entire school district to show what it looks like to have disagreement and be able to show good manners and respectful engagement. Character you have shown, character in the midst of crisis. The best leaders show character in the midst of crisis. You've shown our students how to think, analyze, focus on what's best for the whole while recognizing that a 100% satisfaction is ideal but often unrealistic. You've shown calmness and a level-headed demeanor in the midst of toxic and often uninformed criticism. Thank you. You are a great example to our children. You are preparing them to navigate as citizens of the world, citizens who are intelligent and interact easily in diverse communities, diverse communities within our district, within our nation, and with our world. So thank you for exercising calm, logic, and sensibility. You have shown us the way on how to play in the big leagues. As Martin Luther King once said, "Perhaps education is intelligence and character," and maybe that is the goal of education. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public commenters that I named that are here now that want to speak? That closes public comment. We are moving now on to the Superintendent Report. Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Carubus, members of the Board of Ed and the Indian Prairie Community. Since we started voluntary surveillance testing of staff and students, we have had only three people who have tested positive of a more than 3,000 surveillance tests. We continue to feel confident that our schools are safe and will continue with this program through the end of April. Our middle school administrators are now in the process of creating plans for eighth-grade promotion ceremonies. We are happy that we will be able to recognize our eighth-grade students. Principals will be sending home information about these ceremonies after spring break. We have three new, we have three teachers who were awarded A-plus awards that are given out by the Indian Prairie Education Foundation and funded by Wells Fargo Advisors. These three teachers are Mr. Michael Esser, Special Education Teacher at Maywatt Elementary School, Mr. George Valacuno, English Arts Teacher at Hill Middle School, and Ms. Karen Creepus, Math Teacher at Labanzi Valley High School. These teachers were each nominated by parents of students that are being taught by their teachers. We are very proud of these teachers and the great work that they have done and continue to do for the children in their classes. I'm very happy to announce that District 204 was awarded the Education Career Pathway Grant from the Illinois State Board of Education. We are excited to say that we have been awarded a 70,000 Career Pathway Grant to recruit and support future educators at our three high schools. We will use the funds over the next four years as part of our Project Grow Your Own initiative. The overall goal of Project Grow Your Own is to prepare a diverse group of young people for future careers in education through targeted recruitment to the career and technical education career pathway. Project Grow Your Own will not only prepare Indian Prairie students for future careers in education, but also allows the school district to mentor and recruit underrepresented students into the profession. The latter, a goal central to Project Grow Your Own work, will help ensure future Indian Prairie educators reflect the diverse out by the Indian Prairie Education Foundation and funded by Wells Fargo Advisors. These three teachers are Mr. Michael Esser, special education teacher at Maywatz Elementary School, Mr. George Valacuno, English arts teacher at Hill Middle School, and Ms. Karen Creepus, math teacher at Wabansy Valley High School. These teachers were each nominated by parents of students that are being taught by their teachers. We are very proud of these teachers and the great work that they have done and continue to do for the children in their classes. I'm very happy to announce that District 204 was awarded the Education Career Pathway Grant from the Illinois State Board of Education. We are excited to say that we have been awarded a 70,000 Career Pathway Grant to recruit and support future educators at our three high schools. We will use the funds over the next four years as part of our Project Grow Your Own initiative. The overall goal of Project Grow Your Own is to prepare a diverse group of young people for future careers in education through targeted recruitment to the career and technical education career pathway. Project Grow Your Own will not only prepare Indian Prairie students for future careers in education, but also allows the school district to mentor and recruit underrepresented students into the profession. The latter, a goal central to Project Grow Your Own work, will help ensure future Indian Prairie educators reflect the diversity of our community. Parents are invited to join us this Wednesday at 7:00 PM for our next Parent University, where we will discuss how to pay for college, and it is never too early to start planning for that. Our high school, our high school professional school counselors were focused on financial aid, scholarship, and resources available to help parents navigate the process and ease the stress of paying for their child's college education. Parent University will be streamed live on our YouTube channel beginning at 7:00 PM. More information is on our website. And finally, I'd like to end my comments by presenting an award to one of our board members. The Illinois Association of School Boards recognizes Ms. Kathy Peal for her dedicated service and leadership as vice chair of the DuPage Division during the 2019-2021 term. This certificate recognizes her dedication to service to others, leadership, and striving to achieve the association's mission of building excellence in local school governance. And I'm going to hand you the award now.
Next on the agenda, we move to consent agenda. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items D through H as presented. Please identify yourself before doing.
This is Lori Donahue. I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through H as presented.
Second, Ms. Kathy.
There's been a motion and a second. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Peal?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Raisack?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we move on to the discussion item, section of our agenda. COVID update, expanding in-person learning with Dr. Tally, Mr. Akarius, Mr. Hellman, and Ms. Rosenbloom.
Thank you, Mr. Carubus, members of the Board of Education and Indian Prairie Community. Tonight during our COVID-19 update, we will focus on expanding in-person learning. As a school system, we are almost evenly divided between those who want in-person and those who want remote learning. We have tried to thread the needle carefully in our approach to providing a robust program for all of our learners with the understanding that no program we produce will meet with satisfaction for everybody. All of us want to return to a pre-pandemic education life. That will happen soon, but until then, we do have to understand that our plans have to meet the needs of both learners. From the beginning, we have been consistent in our approach. We have stated that we would always monitor and modify our plan based upon the learning needs of our students and the health and safety conditions in our community. To that end, we have been consistent in our use of data, using the same sources of our data and the same source of our guidance from the county health department, the CDC, and from Northwestern University. Tonight, you will hear about our plans for expanding the learning options for our students. These options will expand time for direct instruction for elementary students, both those in-person and those who are remote, provide those students with more direct interactions with their specials, teachers, and expand in-person learning days from four days to five across K-12 levels. We have been focused on both remote and in-person learners all year. We have also been focused on how these changes have an impact on the students and their families. Our decisions have been made understanding their impact on the whole community. As a superintendent, I cannot think of just one group, I have to think of the whole community. We believe that our plan provides for both learners as we finish out this school year. I will now turn the presentation to our deputy, Mr. Akarius, who is supported by Ms. Laura Rosenbloom, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, and Mr. Brad Hellman, Assistant Superintendent for Middle Schools and High Schools. Mr. Akarius?
Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Tally. Thank you for allowing us to present about expanding in-person learning this evening. Before I start, we would just like to once again thank our students, thank our parents, thank our principals, thank our teachers, thank our support staff for once again adjusting to another shift. I know we did say throughout the year that we would make adjustments once we received any kind of guidance to try to support our students, and I just want to thank everybody for all of their efforts. Our goal has been to return, to support a comprehensive educational program for the 2020-21 school year within the current guidelines provided by local, state, and federal health and safety officials. We've been rigorous in trying to share any updates to those changes, and we will once again share more changes that occurred on March 9th. Our process has been to develop, to validate, and to monitor and modify, and we've been consistent with that. Currently, the state of Illinois is in Phase 4 revitalization. We did recently receive some communication that the state is trying to shift to Phase 4.5, which would be a bridge to Phase 5. They're informing us that once 70% of residents 65 and older have been vaccinated, that we would be able to move to this phase, which actually provides us some good guidance as we approach graduation, as that would increase capacity from 25% to 60%. They also laid out that they would move to Phase 5 once 50% of residents 16 and older have been vaccinated, and there's a plan to start that in the near future. The ISB and IDPH guidance comes on the heels of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidance issued February 2021, which emphasized the importance of prioritizing reopening of schools for in-person instruction over nonessential business and activities. This guidance echoes the five essential mitigation strategies the CDC recommends, including universal and correct use of personal protective equipment. This guidance included quite a bit on proper use of face masks, social distancing, which the CDC refers to as physical distancing as much as possible, contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine in collaboration with the local health department, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including ventilation, and hand washing and respiratory Social distancing for in-person instruction, fitting students in a school's physical space while still complying with spacing guidelines is an essential threshold question for school districts seeking to return to in-person instruction. The Part 4 guidance reduces the amount of social distancing required for in-person instruction as indicated in the following chart. Student-to-student interaction is now three to six feet. Student-to-vaccinated staff interaction is three to six feet. Unvaccinated staff to anyone is six feet. Masked individuals serving, receiving, or disposing of food and leaving cafeteria three to six feet. Anyone eating, six feet. The guidance also makes clear that capacity limits for in-person learning and associated activities, including classrooms, gyms, cafeterias, and multipurpose rooms, should be determined by the space's ability to accommodate social distancing, not any set capacity limit or percentage. Although the ISB and IDPH guidance has eased social distancing recommendations, the quarantine requirements for close contacts have not changed for purposes of quarantine. ISB and IDPH state that a person who has had confirmed COVID-19 in the past 90 days or is fully vaccinated does not need to quarantine even if they are close contact. However, any other person with or without a face mask who was within six feet of a confirmed case of COVID-19 with or without a face mask for a cumulative 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period during the infectious period will need to quarantine. Last summer, State Superintendent Dr. Carmen Ayala advised that remote instruction must be an option upon request. The new guidance requires a district to provide a remote option only to those at increased risk of severe illness or who live with someone at increased risk. We are still keeping that option open for our parents for the remainder of this school year, and we do currently have over 10,000 students who are still receiving their instruction Our preschool students will follow the same expanded schedule that started March 15th, and our step students will follow their same schedule. They should not expect to see any further changes at this point in time. And with that, I will shift over to Assistant Superintendent Elementary, Ms. Rosenbloom.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Tally. It's my pleasure to share a few updates with you this evening. At the elementary level, we will be expanding to five days a week. Our in-person learners will attend from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Students will participate in learning activities within the school setting following physical distancing and safety protocols, which were just outlined by Mr. Akarius. Our remote learners will also participate in learning from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. They will follow the learning schedule provided by the teacher that will mirror the schedule of the in-person learners. Each time we've made a change this year, we've taken two main factors into consideration. The first is the information from the governing bodies that set the parameters to ensure the safety of students and staff, organizations like the CDC, the IDPH, and ISB. We also look at the current metrics, and the information is what really helps us determine what is possible, what plans can we consider and what plans can we not consider based on those regulations. The second question that we ask is, what is best for all students? We take into consideration the needs of our remote students and our in-person students. We ask, how can we provide the best instructional program to meet the needs of students, given the parameters that we must work within? We also carefully take into consideration the input from our teachers. They're the ones on the ground floor working day in and day out with our students. We have all always believed that the more students we have in person and the longer they're in school, the better. We also know that some families are not comfortable or able to have their children attend in-school. We have continued to increase in-person learning over the course of the year, and we've continued to support all of our students, both those that are remote and those that are in-person. As you know, each time we've made a decision, we have considered multiple options. We've considered the advantages and disadvantages of each, and as you've heard me say each time prior to today, we did feel that there was a decision that was better than including rooming and zooming in our plan, also known as concurrent teaching. We've shared with you the reasons why this was not our preferred model and the reasons we felt the selected model was better. At this time, we do believe that a model with concurrent teaching or rooming and zooming is the best option at this time. Since our last change, several things have occurred. On March 9th, guidance came out that said three feet of physical distancing is permitted. Second, more people have been vaccinated. Third, overall, our positivity rates have continued to decline. Fourth, people are becoming more comfortable sending their children to school. We added 1,000 more students when we moved to our four half-days-per-week model. Fifth, we're heading now into the last quarter of the year. And sixth, the fewer the numbers on Zoom, the easier it is for teachers to meet their needs. We do have fewer students selecting remote than we previously had. Therefore, we are putting forward a five-day-a-week model with rooming and zooming. The main advantage of this model at this time is that it allows students to remain with their same teacher. The only other way to have students in-person five days a week from 9:00 to 3:00 would be to assign students to a remote teacher, in other words, they would only work with remote students, or to an in-person teacher, a teacher who would only work with in-person students. That means there would be many students that would be changing classrooms. At this point, we know that teachers know their students very well by this point in the year, and they are grateful and excited to be able to finish the year strong with this same group of students. Teachers also have learned a lot about each of their students over the course of this year. They use that information to plan their instruction and to skillfully engage each of the students that they know so well. We believe this will help them succeed in the last quarter of the year. In addition, we know students have developed relationships with their classmates. This model also gives them the opportunity to finish the year with those same group of students. In addition, students and families have grown to know the teacher and benefit from the familiar routines, communication, and procedures that the teacher has put in place and that they are comfortable with. In addition to the importance of these relationships, this schedule gives us an opportunity to teach more of the content areas over the course of the day. The access and contact time with the teacher is spread out across the day, as are the opportunities for independent work. They too will be spread out across the day. The other advantage is that at this point, teachers have learned a lot through their experience teaching remotely, and they've always taught students in-person. Our students have also become Zoom experts in many ways, and they too are in a better position to be able to do this model of learning. So in summary, it's important that we provide equitable, positive learning experiences for both remote and in-person learners. Teachers have worked hard to build a community of learners, and this enables that to continue. Teachers know their students and can create systems to support student learning regardless of their status as in-person or remote. All students will have increased access to their teacher, and once again, families are familiar with the communication structures and routines with this current teacher. In this slide, we're highlighting the teacher expectations and the expectations for remote and in-person students. Teachers will provide consistent direct instruction for all students. That whole group direct instruction timeframe will be determined by the student's developmental level. Will still be able to reteach and provide skill reinforcement through intervention time. Teachers will continue to provide opportunities for the independent work and practice. They'll also give short mini lessons and then provide an independent activity to remote students so they can focus on the in-person students for the small groups, then they can switch. We've already started some training and information for teachers on this. I'll expand on that a little bit later, but we want to provide teachers everything they need to skillfully adjust to this next model. Teachers will also continue to provide frequent check-ins for the remote and in-person students. As you look at columns two and three, you will notice where it talks about the in-person learner expectations and the remote learner expectations. There actually, one looks longer than the other because there's one additional bullet item, but they are identical other than some students receive it by being physically in the school and other students receive it via Zoom. I know that there are many concerns about the impact that this will have on our remote learners, especially since we've talked previously about the challenges of rooming and zooming concurrently. So here are the things that I want people to understand about what we'll be doing to support our remote learners. First of all, they're going to have access to the same instruction as our in-person learners. They too will have screen breaks for lunch, movement breaks, and independent work. Families can work with the classroom teacher if Families can work with the classroom teacher if screen time is a concern. Our buildings will also prioritize additional in-person adult support for our kindergarten and first-grade classrooms that have higher numbers of remote learners. This support will be prioritized for math lessons first and then reading lessons. Once we've allocated staff to those levels, we will then go on to second grade and third grade based on the people resources that are available. We are looking to hire additional staff to provide this support, and we're also looking at internal coverage to provide this support in key content areas. The number of classrooms we can support will depend on the amount of staff available, and when I go on and share a sample math lesson, I'll describe more specifically what the role of this staff member will look like. Another feature that we'll be adding is called ACE Time. It stands for Ask, Connect, and Engage. It will be available for remote learners and families after schools on Monday through Thursday starting April 13th. Any remote student can sign up and work with the teacher from District 204 during this time to get any questions they have answered or to help them complete schoolwork. I have already been asked the question, can in-person students participate in ACE Time? We certainly wouldn't turn away support for a student who would like to participate in ACE Time, whether they're in-person or remote. We are, however, specifically offering it to remote students because there's no way to replace in-person instruction. Students who are remote are in a variety of settings. Some are at the daycare, some are at grandparents, some are home with parents who are working remotely, some have an adult nearby supporting them, and others don't. All of our in-person students have a teacher in-class supporting them. We know, especially for elementary-age students, being on Zoom with varying levels of support from home can be difficult, so we wanted to offer this additional opportunity for instruction. I did have the pleasure of speaking with two teachers today, so a huge thank you to Swathy and Tarona, but one of the things that they shared as we were talking about this change and transition was just that they're going to continue to teach their students turn-taking and patience, and that's something we've always taught students. If you've ever been in a kindergarten room pre-pandemic, you know that turn-taking and patience, when 25 kids all have a story about their dog, is one of the things that they learn, and we know that just with concurrent teaching, that is going to be one of the things that we're going to need to continue to reinforce with our students. So you might be asking, what is it going to look like? So this is actually a sample of a morning schedule. As you can see, each subject is broken up to identify key times for remote learners to be actively zooming into the classroom. Each classroom teacher will build and share this kind of schedule with parents and students. Breaks will be built in for both in-person and remote learners, and this schedule is probably more similar to our pre-pandemic schedule. It still includes direct instruction, practice, and support, and this will also allow our at-home learners to practice without being on the screen. I know a lot of times people say, is there anything you've learned during the pandemic like that you would want to keep? And so as I was working with our specials teachers, one of the art teachers, actually this is on the schedule, but had just said, you know, we've been creating these little mini videos with like directions and teaching them technique, and they said it's been wonderful because kids can watch it over and over, especially if they're showing multi-steps. It's really nice that the kids can go back and relook at it. So they said that's something that we're thinking want to keep a part of because then we're able to work more with students and give them that feedback about their specific piece of art, but they can review the directions and the technique from the videos. This shows the afternoon part of the day. You'll notice that this sample schedule allows the classroom teacher to provide live instruction to all students in all content areas. You remember that previously, some subjects included a much larger amount of independent time like science and social studies. We know that all students will continue to benefit from small-group literacy instruction. As noted in this sample schedule, there will be designated time for small-group targeted instruction and support. The times for remote students will be communicated to their families. And just please remember, this is a sample. Every school's master schedule in terms of when specials are and all of those things do vary, so this is just a sample to give you a general outline. I do know that from feedback that we received when we were doing remote-only and even feedback that we've received recently, some families would like to have the core instruction chunked together, similar to the model that we're doing now, and we were able to accomplish that with our half-day model, but we do believe that it will be very difficult to do in our nine-to-three model. For us to add support that I talked about, like for math and for reading at K&amp;1, for us to have interventions, it would be very difficult for us to cluster like all of the core stuff together because we do need to stagger our subjects, and then we also need to rotate our special schedule. We have heard feedback from families and teachers that all of the independent time chunked together was difficult for some children, and I think that's the reality of any plan we've created. It works for some students and it doesn't work for other students, and so we continue to seek a way to make the best of either option that is not ideal. And so that's what we'll continue to do with this model, is figure out what are those parts that are hard for students and how do we really work to overcome those. We strive to create and implement the best plan we can for students based on current circumstances, and then we work to problem-solve those challenges. So at this time, we are not planning to chunk the core instruction. Instead, we are planning to communicate this schedule as clearly as possible so parents can plan accordingly. Next, you can take a look at a sample math lesson, which illustrates the reciprocity between teacher and students in both environments with learning structures that have already been established throughout the year, things students are already familiar with. As I mentioned earlier, we're working to provide an additional staff member assigned to primary classrooms with the higher numbers of remote learners. This additional staff member would partner with the teacher in meeting the needs of both remote and in-person students. This will be done for specific parts of the day. So let's just imagine math, we're talking about that, and the support could look like the following. Let's say the teacher says, I'd like you to show me four plus four and how you solve it. The students would then write on their whiteboard and solve. The classroom teacher might circulate the room and look at their responses, while the additional staff member will check the whiteboards on the students on the screen. For the next problem, the teachers may switch. When independent work is assigned, they each could support a group. If there's not an additional staff member in the room, all students will still have their work checked over the course of the lesson. It just might take a little bit longer, or they might not get to check every single problem, but they will still be highly visible and really looking at and providing feedback to the work that students are doing. I know that there are questions about lunch because wow, we haven't gotten to do lunch together in quite a while, and safety is of course a priority in this area as well as all areas of the school. We will maintain physical distancing of at least six feet when eating, and students' masks will be off, obviously, to be able to ingest their food. So we will have a seating chart where students will sit, and it will be designed so that they're six feet apart. When students are getting their food, disposing their food, entering and leaving the cafeteria, they will have their masks on, and they will maintain three or more feet of the physical distancing. Staff will wear masks while supervising the lunchroom. The services will be sanitized between each lunch period. We will continue with the grab-and-go lunch from organic life, and it will be available for all students. And then for any students that have individual plans for food allergies, we will also continue to follow those plans. The final point is really about the location. We will need to use multiple locations within the school, depending on the space needed, the space available, the number of students, and the supervision required. So some of the common spaces that we'll be using include the NPR, the gym, the stage, and in some cases, our schools will need a tent outside because our lunchrooms alone cannot hold an entire lunch period. We've even looked at how we can stagger our lunch periods and group our students in some different ways, but if you've been in a school's cafeteria, even at the elementary level, although our tables vary in size, in the past, about 16 students could sit at a table, and now we're looking at between two and four. So we are looking at a variety of seating arrangements to make sure that we're able to manage that six feet of social distancing. Our principals have been hard at work solving this kind of master jigsaw puzzle, and we are actually looking to hire more lunch supervisors so that they can supervise the students during lunch and recess. So I'm just putting the plug out to all of our community members listening to please apply if they're interested, and maybe you've always wanted to be a school crossing guard or a substitute, we have positions for that as well. This slide is one of my favorite slides because our CNI team has been hard at work. They've been really listening to 204 teachers. They've been talking to our elementary teachers who have already been doing rooming and zooming, and they've been asking, what parts are working, what parts aren't working, how can we use this to best inform the rest of the teachers who will be doing this? They've talked to the middle school and the high school. We have the luxury that they've already been embarking on this journey much longer than we have. They've talked to other elementary districts to find out, how's the rooming and zooming working in their district? They've also created a lot of staff development for them, but they've done it in such a great way. They've made sure that it's on-demand, meaning I could watch it at 7:00 at night if that's when I'm available and I want to, or I can watch it at lunch, or I can watch it during PDM Mondays. There's lots of opportunities for teachers to be able to watch it, but they're also designed to be short. We know that teachers have a limited amount of time, and so they can watch a short segment, learn from it, re-watch it if they want to, learn from it, or choose from other ones. In addition to the short videos that they have, we also have how-to strategies and examples of the learning structures and routine. We are so fortunate because our team has also scheduled support Geek Squad style, meaning they will be coming out to the buildings the week of April 5th to assist with technology setup and to answer any rooming or zooming questions that our teachers might have. So some teachers are like, ooh, I can't wait to set it up. I love this kind of stuff, and other teachers are like, I have no idea what these items are. Can you please show me? And so they will really be going to each school to provide that support. In addition to the equipment setup, they will be available for problem-solving coaching upon request by the school, by the grade-level teams, or by individual teachers. To tell you a little bit more about our equipment, these really, these tools are to support teachers in their instructional delivery so they can do what they do best, which is teaching. The purpose is to remove obstacles in instruction to support student learning. So the tools that we have found most important for our staff are Jabra pucks, which are basically these little round things that they set up by the computer so students at home can hear the teacher and students in school and vice versa. The device will act as a microphone and speaker, which provides a better experience for both remote and in-person students. And I can tell you, when I was in one of the classrooms, I was standing by the monitor where all the students were on Zoom and on the screen, and then there were some kids in person, and then the teacher was literally in the farthest corner of the room and basically whispered, give a thumbs up if you can hear me, and I watched all the thumbs go up on the screen. So even whispering from the farthest point, this Jabra puck really picks up the voice so that the kids at home are able to hear it and the kids in school can hear them as well. Another equipment need is wide-angle cameras, and they're set up to provide teachers flexibility in their instructional delivery to support remote learners. Wide-angle cameras can focus on the teacher during remote instruction, on the class during class discussion, or on the application of learning time. It can be used as a document camera to model learning. So it's really nice the teacher does not have to stay seated at the laptop. They are able to move around the room. And then the final piece of equipment that we already have in our classrooms but are our whiteboards, and that's really so teachers can share their screen while working on the smartboard, and that allows both remote and in-person learning students to see what's happening on the board. Teachers have given us valuable feedback about what they need, and we are ensuring they have it. One of the things we have time to do between now and our April 13th start is to put and place everything we need for rooming and zooming. We've asked teachers to start small, pick one subject area at a time to think about. What will room and zoom look like for math? Then think about reading, then think about social studies. It's no surprise, I'm sure to you, that our teachers in 204 are embracing this challenge just like they have every other one this year, by doing everything in their power to support student growth. I'm continuously impressed by our teachers. Here's just a short story from last week. One of our third-grade teachers was so animated as she talked about trying out rooming and zooming last week. Now, mind you, this was even before she'd gotten the equipment, but she was just so excited and wanted to see what it was like. She said it was so much fun to try it and that the students really liked being a part of it because she, of course, invited her remote students, like, hey, come, come join this math lesson if you want, like, I want to see how this works. So of course, the kids felt very special to be a part of that as well. So right, leave it to our teachers to turn a challenge into an adventure, not only for themselves but for their students. And then there was another teacher that was in this same meeting, and she said, I really want to try that too. Like, can you show me how? And so even though they were at totally different schools, that teacher said absolutely, and off the two of them went. And to me, this just illustrates the story of 204, and while that is history that we are all very familiar with, we're all continuing, or starting to write history, right? Through this pandemic, we're doing things we've never been asked to do, but those core values and beliefs where we work together, we collaborate, and we problem-solve are evident in the work our teachers do every day. So when will this model start? We will start our five-day model from 9:00 to 3:00 a.m. on Tuesday, April 13th. Part of that, as I already stated, is because we need time to make schedule changes, set up equipment, set up lunch areas, and many other details. We also want to get, make sure we give teachers the time they need to prepare. In addition, we already had our IAR testing schedule set for our third through fifth graders. So as you can see on the chart, we have a few random things happening also, but basically from now until April 12th, we will follow our current schedule with the exception of a few days like April 5th, which is non-attendance day, April 6th, which is a remote day due to our school's being a pulling place. Our school principals are going to make sure that they're communicating the exact schedule for IAR testing and special dates. It does look a little bit different at each school because we already had that planned before the state changed the guidance on March 9th in terms of three feet, so we've just continued to adjust based on that information. So sometimes people want to know, how can we help? So the two main things that we'd like to ask from elementary is, for parents, as we have more and more students in our schools, please remember to self-certify your child each day. It is essential. Schools are having to contact large numbers of parents and guardians of children daily that are not self-certifying, and students are missing valuable instructional time each day as they have to wait for our staff to make contact with their parent or guardian, ensure that they are healthy. We have anywhere between five and about 50 students per day at each school, like, not at all 21 schools, but at each school. So that is something that would really make a difference if we could have more of our families be sure they're self-certifying. And then the last thing we're asking for is just people who are available to apply to be a lunch supervisor, crossing guard, or substitute because our people resources are essential. We look forward to starting our five-day-per-week model of instruction on Tuesday, April 13th. Would you like me to do questions now, or would you like Brad to go next and ask questions at the end? Oh, absolutely, you bet.
All right. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Tally. Hope everyone's doing well. It is my pleasure to summarize with the board the community plans for expanding in-person learning opportunities at the middle school and high school. As was the case with elementary, we are focused on providing in-person learning opportunities in a safe environment, following the guidance from the Illinois State Department. following the guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health. The plans for both middle school and high school were developed in collaboration with the leadership at the, at both levels at the buildings. And we want to maintain the same schedule for both in-person and remote learners throughout. So they will be identical to one another if I don't specifically point that out. At the middle school level, our collective goal is to bring all students who selected hybrid learning starting April 7th. This date is the start of fourth quarter and coincides with the changing of elective and encore courses. Monday, April 12th, Monday, April 19th, and Monday, April 26th, we'll have different grade levels attending school to take the Illinois State Test, the IAR, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. The IAR testing dates will be, times will be from eight to eight until 12:59 PM. Once IAR tests have been completed, the middle school will transition to all in-person students attending five days per week. And this will start May 3rd. One of the things that I would like to point out at this time is that while we are bringing all students in on May 3rd, starting on Monday, five days a week at that time, initially prior to the state indicating that we could shrink our social distancing space from six to three feet, we would have been going all the way through until May 10th. And the first day that we would have been able to bring students in would have been May 17th. So that was a, a big piece that assisted us in getting students back five days a week just a little bit sooner. When we do come back for five days per week, we have up on the Board your schedule. You'll see that on Monday, we are going to be running all nine period, all nine periods. And that will take place from eight until 12:59. And then we will have lunch, just like we do on Tuesday through Friday, from 12:59 until two. And then on Mondays, we are going to maintain the drop everything and read along with the genius hour ideas that have already been implemented this year. And those will be taking place for, on Mondays from two until three. And then Tuesday through Friday, we are maintaining the block schedule with periods one through five on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And on Wednesdays, periods six through 10, and on Fridays, periods six through 10 as well. And then we will still maintain the office hour zooms from 2:15 until three o'clock, Tuesday through Friday. So that schedule is going to provide consistency that our students have already been experiencing and should hopefully be a smooth transition once we are able to get through IAR testing. Wasn't patient enough. Here, just so that way everybody can kind of see in one spot, all of the testing dates that we have or all the dates that are coming up that are big and important. We have spring break coming up, March 29th through April 2nd. Monday, when we come back from spring break, that is a remote planning day for teachers, so there will be no student attendance on that day or no student instruction as well. On Tuesday, April 6th, will be a remote learning day for all students due to schools being polling places for the election. So at the middle school, that will be periods one through five. On Wednesday, April 7th, will be the first day that will be, be bringing back groups A and B, or the A to Z combo, if you will. And then we will have testing on Mondays, April 12th, 19th, and 26th. And then on May 3rd, we'll begin the full-time expanded in-person instruction with periods one through nine. We're going to transition to the high school at this time. And then we'll come back and have a conversation a little bit about why it is that we're sticking with period, the eight to 12:59 at the middle school and the seven twenty-five to twelve twenty at the high school. The high school's schedule mirrors that of the middle school. It maintains the block schedule on Tuesday through Friday and having the full-period schedule on Mondays. High schools will be, have all in-person learners in the building starting tomorrow. A big day. We'll have all students in who have selected in-person learning Tuesday through Friday this week. And then the first Monday that students will be in following a Monday schedule will be April 12th. Due to the SAT testing for juniors on April 13th, the first day of five days per week for in-person learners will be April, the week of April 19, April 1st, sorry. April 19th. Sorry, April 19th. That schedule that we will be following for the high school looks similar to what you've seen before. Tuesday through Friday, we are keeping the exact same schedule as we have currently with periods one through four on Tuesdays and Thursdays and periods five through eight on Wednesdays and Fridays. And then on Monday, we are going to be again running the entire bell schedule, periods one through eight, starting at seven twenty-five until twelve twenty. And that is a consistent timeframe that we have for students on Tuesday through Friday as well.
Brad, can I just say right here that this, for people watching, this schedule right here is for that week of April 12th, correct?
Yes.
Because this is a different Monday time. I just wanted to point that out.
It is a different Monday time, just like the middle school was a different Monday time schedule. And it only starts when we go to the, to the in-person learning for the A to Z group on those, on the, starting those Mondays. May 3rd for the middle school and then April 12th for the high school. All right. So just in summary, we have all those dates there. You'll see some various, you'll see the similarities except for a couple of small differences. March 23rd tomorrow, the first day that we're bringing A and B group students back at the high school level. We still have spring break, April 5th and 6th are the same at all three levels. And then Monday, April 12th, periods one through eight for groups A and B students. And then on Tuesday, April 13th, we see SAT testing for juniors and for stu, all other students. That will be an asynchronous day for periods one through four. All right. So at this time, I'd like to address why it is that we have not included lunch in our plans. You'll notice that we have intentionally kept our student day to under five hours so that way our students are not going to be experiencing lunch within the school day. The only way to really understand this issue is to review the facts associated with how we are currently doing lunch, the physical limitations of our lunch facilities in our buildings, and the impact of six feet of social distancing. So at the middle school, pre-COVID practices, most schools have one lunch period per grade level. There are a couple that do have two. But the lunch period is thirty minutes long. The typical lunch space of a six by feet, six feet by six feet square holds approximately seven students. That six foot by six foot square is important because that is the amount of social distancing that is required when one removes their mask to eat. In most of our places in middle school, we have seven students who would fit inside of that square. At our lunch tables, we have twelve students per lunch table. Each student gets approximately twenty inches of space to sit in from side to side. So that's not twenty inches from your shoulder to the next shoulder or twenty inches this way. It's your entire body fits within side of twenty inches. Additionally, you have about fifteen inches of space in front of you that you could call your own because our tables are about thirty inches wide. So somebody else is taking another fifteen inches of space in that direction. So really, to call your own, you're looking at a twenty by fifteen inch space. Our lunch tables are awesome. They're incredibly efficient at maximizing space within our, within our cafeterias. And they have worked very well for us as a collective organization. And it has, our lunchroom space has been very well utilized in making sure that all of our students are able to fit in, in this type of schedule. However, as you can imagine with COVID practices, this changes just a little bit. So most schools, again, we still have one, one lunch per grade level. Lunch is still thirty minutes long, but now we have six feet of social distancing that is required. So a typical lunch space, instead of housing seven students in it, is now only going to be taking up one student. And our lunch tables decrease efficiency of space when you're asking for six feet. Because the seats do not work out perfectly to hit six feet for another student to sit, six feet for another student to sit. They're just an awkward combination. And in the end, at a typical lunch table that in pre-COVID times sits twelve students, we would be able to sit two. So that is not a very effective use of, of our space. To kind of help you better understand this piece, got some current data that is, well, not current, but not, not as current as you're going to understand in just a little bit. I showed you in the last time we presented on, in February, on the 22nd, all of the in-person selections that were being made for hybrid. And we had between thirty-five and fifty-two percent of kids in a particular building selecting to come in. And you see that today, or actually as of Sunday, when Mr. Sprandell ran the numbers for me, we upped that percentage rate. It says at forty-one all the way up to sixty-five. However, our middle school principals do some creative things when they use student schedules. And one of the things that we learned this afternoon is that they had coded some students in a little bit of a different fashion. So instead of looking at STILL and thinking that we did not have an increase in students, it actually, that number really should be fifty-eight percent of the students that still have selected in-person learning. They were just simply coded in a different fashion. That STILL doesn't necessarily negate the next part of the conversation when it comes to lunch. Our largest grade level and the number of students needing lunch is listed there by school. You'll see that at Krone, there are one hundred and eighty-one sixth graders that are coming in. That's a minimum number who have decided, who have elected to come into school four or five days a week. The maximum number of students that we can fit in the lunchroom with six feet of social distancing is one hundred and thirty students. But the reality is, we can actually really only fit about a hundred and thirteen students. So what that means at this time is that we would need a space for sixty-eight students to go and have lunch. At twelve students per classroom, at six feet of social distancing is about what we can fit in a typical classroom, we would need a minimum of six other rooms to be able to both house students. And we would also need to supervise those six other rooms in addition to the lunchroom that we currently have. That's a lot of manpower to be able to make sure that we are supervising our students and also cleaning up after them and making sure that we're not leaving behind allergens. All of those things would have to be taken into consideration. Additionally, I would like to point out Hill Middle School. As Mr. Carubis knows, Hill Middle School is the first middle school at, in, in Indian Prairie. And it is our, so therefore it's our oldest, and it does have some limitations to it. One of the limitations is its cafeteria. Its cafeteria will only hold sixty-four students, six feet apart. That's a maximum number, assuming that every desk fits in there exactly perfectly. And we need a hundred and seventy-one at a minimum at seventh grade to have lunch all at the same time. Which means that we would need to find, if I do my math quickly in my head, a place for about a hundred and seven people to have lunch all at once. That is a difficult task for us to overcome in the middle of a school year. One that I think we can effectively plan for, for next year. But in this particular school year with our existing schedule and existing pieces in place, that is going to be a challenge. Now, some people might ask, how did you get your maximum numbers? Our maximum numbers, we actually looked at the length and width of every single classroom, every single lunch, lunchroom. And I'm going to use Krone as an example. Krone shows that it is a feat of eighty-three feet for length. And when you divide that by six, you end up with a number that is approximately thirteen. So that means that there could be thirteen chairs that go, that go lengthwise in being six feet apart. Its width is sixty-two feet, which means that we could approximately put ten chairs going, going across. That means that there would be approximately one hundred and thirty chairs that could fit inside of that, inside of that space effectively. That is again, assuming that all of those chairs are truly individual chairs and can be done in perfect squares. So that is indeed an absolute maximum. And I'm going to show you again what our lunchroom looks like for those of you who are unaware. I'll make sure that, I don't think the pointer works. One of the things I would like to point out is that this lunchroom is like Granger. It's like STILL. It is Krone and Skullen. They all have the same basic footprint. And if Mr. Carius moves his mouse really quick, he'll be able to point out that right there is where we would have a restroom. So what we would like to do is remove two, four seats from that area so that we don't have students that are essentially eating inside of the, inside of the restroom. We also would have to remove a chair over by where the faculty lounge would be. And that is, keep going just a little bit more, right about in that space. We would have to remove two chairs that are over where the exit sign is, is located. And then we would have to remove ten chairs. That is where the food distribution piece is located where those tables are. So for a graphic representation of how we came to our math, this is the realistic maximum in which we took the same logic that I just used about the thirteen chairs going across or ten, thirteen chairs going across in ten deep. You'll notice it's a hundred and thirty squares up on the board. And we would have to remove all of those red spots, which would reduce us down to a hundred and thirteen seats. That STILL causes us difficulty when we come back here. And we notice how many students are actually going to be in the building. And remember, these numbers are growing by the minute. Building principals are still getting requests from, from families to be able to be included in the in-person learning. And we have also been holding them off for scheduling purposes and beginning to add those now. And so every building has an issue with lunch. The building that is in the best shape on this table is STILL. But as I remind you, they went up thirteen percent of in-person students. So that number is still a little bit skewed, but it's still probably more of a manageable way to approach lunch than it would be at Hill with a hundred and seventy-one students at the, at that particular grade level and needing to find space for a hundred and seven other students. This also happens at all of the other periods that are happening for lunch at the middle school level. I just simply chose to show you the largest period. So that's middle school. We did the same type of exploration at high school. Here you see the same type of table where we have the percentage of students selecting hybrid and for the, on the two twenty-two and then on three twenty-one. Then what we looked at is the largest, not really grade level, it's more about the largest period and the number of students needing lunch. At Matia Valley, the largest class period is three hundred and eight students. But it has the benefit of being one of the periods where students can either go home early because their last period of the day is a lunch period with the block schedule. Or they can come in late because their, their lunch period is the first period of the day in the block schedule. So I really didn't want to include that because I felt like it could skew the conversation. So the two hundred and forty-three number for Matia is a period that is embedded in the middle of the day that we are only allowing open campus to go for our juniors and seniors. That number of two hundred and forty-three is not going to be dramatically decreased because as of earlier today, we only had about sixty students at each high school who had elected to take the waiver to be able to leave during open campus. So that is not going to be the relief valve that we were hoping it was going to be. So in looking at this, Matia Valley has two hundred and forty-three kids in its largest lunch embedded in the middle of its schedule. And its lunchroom is only going to fit a hundred and sixty-eight of them. So again, we're looking at close to eighty students who need to find another place for lunch. The story gets a little bit more complicated when we come to Niqua Valley. If you remember Niqua Valley, Niqua Valley lunch is kind of in that circular arrangement. It's not a perfect square like we showed you from Skullen or from Granger because it's circular. Our guesstimates are that at most we could fit a hundred and forty kids in there, but realistically, we think that number is actually ninety. So that means that for that lunch period, in the middle of the day, when two hundred and fifty-five students need to eat, we need to find an alternative location for about a hundred and sixty-five of them. That's going to be a challenge even at a large high school as large as Niqua. That's still a lot of students that have to either find another room and be supervised or find another location and again, be six feet apart and continue the supervision process. That is, that's, that's something that we will have to tackle over the summer for when we look to return in the fall. And you see that Wabonzi Valley has a similar dilemma when it looks at their middle-of-the-day lunch at two hundred and thirty-nine kids who need lunch and we have space for a hundred and thirty-nine of them between the lunchroom and the accessory areas that they've always utilized outside of their lunchroom. That gets us to one thirty-nine. And again, there we would have about a hundred students that we would need to find an alternative place for them to have lunch. And again, their largest lunch period is three hundred and twelve. So we would be looking creatively at, at ways to be able to address that problem next year. So if I'm not mistaken, that brings me to the end of my explanation about lunch. But one of the things that the building principals really wanted me to make sure that you all understood and when I had the conversation with them, is that the supervision of multiple locations is not an easy one for them to take, to take place at this current time. locations is not an easy one for them to take, to take place at this current time because we don't really have a lot of lunchroom supervisors. Matter of fact, elementary has recently requested that if we do have any, any people who are free, could we send them their way to supervise lunch? Also, all of our buildings will not have the desks necessary to make perfection. So when you look at this slide right here for Crone, and this is Crone's lunchroom and a hundred and thirteen desks, we do not have that at Crone, we don't have it at Still, Granger, or any of the other locations. I think we might have enough desks to do sixty-four at Hill, but that's because that number is relatively small. Also, the coverage of staff to be able to go into the various locations is also an issue. And then finally, this room here, this is right now set up to be the overflow room for band. When our band students are playing, in order to be able to utilize their instruments according to guidance from ISBE, they can play for up to thirty minutes, and then they have to vacate the room, and we have to have an air exchange with inside of that room for at least two cycles of air refresh. Those students, when they leave, they put away their, their instruments, they change out their masks that they use for instrument playing to the masks that they use for speaking, they go into an alternative location to learn. That alternative location at this time in almost every building is the cafeteria because it's the only place that we have that is large enough to be able to hold the bands when they, when they come in, when they leave that room. So this would be another hurdle that we would still have to solve, and it's something that we would, we would use the summer to be able to effectively plan for this, or if all goes, goes well, hopefully the, the requirement for band playing might be changed like some of the other guidance has that would free this space up and allow the space to be able to be used on a regular basis. So I think I've hit the points that they wanted to make sure that I, I did when it came to looking at lunch. Lunch is a dilemma for us to solve. And then last but not least, since we're finishing the presentation, is that the guidance? Then Mr. Akarius is going to continue.
All right, great, thank you. In most summers, we typically have a very limited offerings for our summer learning, and so at our next board meeting on April twelfth, we will be doing a full presentation about summer learning offerings for this summer. We will have offerings at elementary and middle school, providing additional opportunities for students to make connections and boost their academic skills as they prepare for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. We also, at the high school, are going to offer credit recovery options. These are for students who are short on credits to be able to graduate or look like they're trending to be short on credits for graduation. As we've done in the past, we will have a summer bridge. We do anticipate more students being invited to that summer bridge. It's a program at each of the three high schools focusing on helping freshman students enter our schools more confident and prepared for success. This three-week program is focused on academics as well as growth mindset, advocacy, and belongingness. This typically happens, and we're planning on it for this summer to occur the last two weeks of July and the first week of August. There will also be the offerings that happen typically for high school students at the College of DuPage course offerings, and those will be located in our buildings as well, as they have been in the past. And then what's already been out there offering, and we have, I know over eight hundred students already registered, probably higher than that now, but we will also be providing our tool for online courses for high school credit, which are, you can see those available on our district website at this point in time. But as I said, we will provide more information at the April twelfth board meeting to talk about dates, offerings, and how to get that information from the schools to the parents to help people prepare for that. We've received many questions about preparing for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Our return-to-school goal is to support a comprehensive educational program for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year within the current guidelines provided by local, state, and federal health and safety officials. Our return-to-school expectations are for all students, unless there's a medical exemption, will be in-person for learning five full days per week. This is very consistent with the most recent guidance that came from our state on March ninth about how we should provide education for our students for this upcoming school year. Medical exemptions will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis to determine appropriate distance learning options. More information will be coming about what qualifies for a medical exemption. We are expecting to hear from the state further guidance on what would constitute that. We also are hearing that we should expect that residents at the age of sixteen and higher should have had the opportunity to also receive their vaccination by the time that we start school next year. We feel with these things in place that this will give us that opportunity to return to learn five full days per week. Will there be challenges if certain metrics or guidelines, especially around lunch being six feet apart, if those don't change? Yes, there will be challenges associated with that. We do think, we are already trying to work through options that would help us support that, but you know, we're also hoping that as more people are vaccinated and as the positivity rates, hopefully they stay low or keep going down, that, that'll provide us better opportunities with physical distancing in that arena as well. With this, we are, we do have committees working at each of the different levels, early childhood, elementary school, middle school, high school, and its steps. Each committee includes administrators, teachers, and will include parents. Dr. Tally, would you like to talk about this one?
Thank you, Mr. Akarius. Though we have started the process to plan for next school year, that planning process is always evolving. In the spring, in an effort to gather input, we will have a parent survey and a teacher survey. These surveys will give us opportunities to gauge stakeholders' views about what is important to them for the next school year. Additionally, we will have discussions with parents, staff, and students to gather additional feedback that will help us as we consider our plans. Next year, we will be able to build on the successes we have had, reflect on what, we, what, reflect on what did not work, and as we craft our plan for the next school year. And we'll now turn it over to questions from the board.
Mr. Rezak, are you still with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, we hear a little bit more volume from him, and then you have the floor, sir.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, hang on, I'm turning you up right now. Gotcha, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I want, I want to thank everyone, Dr. Tally, Mr. Akarius, Ms. Rosenbloom, Mr. Hillman. I have three quick questions and then a reflection on my own. The first question on slide seven, it talks about new guidance that requires a district to provide remote option only to those at increased risk of severe illness or who live with someone at increased risk. I noted that new guidance, but I don't, to date, I have not seen any specifics to the administration. Have you seen specifics about this new guidance? If not, what are you doing to work with ISBE to make sure that we get as specific as possible in order to give direction to our parents?
Mr. Rezak, so for that question, we have not seen that specific guidance from the state. We, meaning all the superintendents, are having that conversation. We are pushing for more specificity as to what this will look like. Additionally, on our call this morning, this afternoon, with about twenty other school districts, we talked about if nothing comes from the state, how we can work together to create something that's more specific across various school districts so that there's more similarity across all districts as to how this document would be created and used and decisions made about who could have that exemption.
Thank you. I, I think that's important. We waited until June or July to receive guidance before, and I think it did not help, so the sooner that can come out, my advice is the better. Although that has been addressed several times by you, Dr. Tally, and in the newspaper, parents still question why are we doing the IAR testing? Just briefly, we're required to do it by the federal government. Am I mistaken?
No, you're not mistaken. The state asked for a waiver from the federal government. The federal government did not give that waiver. They did give a little bit of flexibility, but we still are required to do the assessment.
Final question. We clearly know lunch is an issue. I know we just approved some tents. We've talked about maybe adding lunchroom supervisors, additional desks, hoping that some of the metrics change and the guidelines change. In addition to lunch, is there any roadblocks such as busting or something else that would prevent us from going full-time in September, August, September?
There should not be any other roadblocks. We are pushing forward with full-time every day for all who want in-person for next year, and we think, as Mr. Akarius mentioned, that we should see some changes in social distancing and other requirements that will help with regards to the issues at lunch.
Okay, thank you. Just brief reflection, like Mr. Akarius, I want to thank our principals, teachers, and support staff for all their work. Special thank you, after another presentation, goes out to our students and parents, both our rumors and Zoomers. Is the understatement of all time that COVID is unprecedented. We've asked our students and parents to shift educational paradigm several times in the last thirteen months. As I reflect on my educational career a long time ago, I guess, the only shift that I could even think of is when students went to new math. And it took two or three years to plan and talk about it, and another one or two years to implement the new math as it was defined. Our, our shifts have occurred quickly and have occurred in thirteen months, and there are several of them. I applaud the board and the administration, the guidelines have been consistently followed. I applaud that when shifts have occurred, that we have quickly made those guideline changes. But I appreciate that our parents and our students, that these new guidelines and educational shifts, just like it caused me with new math, causes frustration and it's difficult change for probably everyone. But given the state of the pandemic, we must continue to move forward, and thank you for moving forward. That's all I have, Mr. Carubus.
Thank you. Mr. Rezak?
Is this hot? Yeah, okay. Slide twelve is my first question. Ms. Rosenbloom, you mentioned the adult support helpers or staff. I'm assuming that's not going to be for every classroom, just for the classrooms that there's a large percentage of students in person to help the teacher balance her time between the remote kids and the in-person kids, correct?
Correct. It'll be for the larger number of remote students because it's a little harder for us to make sure we're keeping those remote students engaged when they're zooming in.
Okay, because I, because I know...
The ones in person, we can keep track of, they're right there, but keeping the other ones on the screen, that's, that's the challenge.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and, and I also want to thank you, you know, for paying close attention to those, those K-one or K-two students as well because those are the ones that, that's going to be a long day for them, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm sure I can speak for the rest of my fellow board members too, is, you know, we, we've always consistently said that we are just concerned as back as much as a person as we are for giving a quality education to our remote learner, so, you know, I just, so in the spirit of that, I guess, it sounds like there's going to be some best practices, some training stuff that's going to be taking place between now and when we get to that, that timeframe, right? Those, kind of those best practices for elementary?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then, just the last thing about elementary, and then I'll go to Brad. You know, the, you know, I, I am worried about the, the sound, and I know, you know, you guys have cameras and the, and the, whatever they're called, the pucks. But, you know, I, I hope, you know, it, it's the practice of our teachers, and I'm sure it will be. Oh, and by the way, let me just throw in here, you know, thanks to the teachers too because, and I know it's been mentioned a few times, but, you know, they've had to adjust a lot in this. You know, I, I hope they will ensure, and I'm sure they will because they are very cognizant of both their in-person and remote learners, but my fear is, you know, those remote, listen, the in-person learners are going to have a fine, easy time hearing the teacher, right? It's those remote learners that I'm still concerned about, that they will be able to see or will be able to hear, so I hope the teachers check in, and I, actually, I hope the parents and students will speak up too, or that'll come out somehow in, you know, the ace time or something where we'll catch wind of that, so. I guess that really wasn't a question. You know, so, Mr. Hillman, you know, I was, I was going to get into all the spacing things and, you know, at the end of the day, we just need to figure out a way to make it work, you know? And I'm, and I'm confident administration will. You know, I, I just think about, you know, the, the extra spaces that we could possibly use, like the gyms and that type of thing, but, you know, I, I understand where the challenges are. It'd be great if we could even expand it this year still, but I'm confident that, you know, getting into next year, that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll make it work. We, we will make it work. So I guess, you know, I, I guess it really wasn't a question there, but, you know, you know, where I, listen, I know that our space in the middle school is very tight, and there's not a lot of extra room, and even with those biggest middle schools, even the gyms aren't that big, or the auxiliary gyms, you know, if they even have one. You know, where I struggled with is because a lot of times the high school kids already right now for their lunch period are spaced out all over the school, but you kind of touched on that, and I'll let you talk instead of me. You kind of touched on that, that really the hard part about that is, it's a lot harder to monitor if kids are eating all over the school, basically in the high schools is really, really what I'm talking about, is that kind of where you guys were with that? Because you mentioned even the principal said it's just, it's almost impossible to cover.
There, there are several pieces to that. One, you do have the central location for which food is distributed, so we would have to come up with an alternative mechanism for distributing food with inside the building to be able to take advantage of those alternate places to eat. Otherwise, you spend almost your entire lunch period traveling to the, to the lunchroom, getting it, and then coming back because they are pretty, pretty large. But there are some solutions that we've preliminarily talked about, but I, I would, I would like to further explore those before sharing them publicly with the board, but I can assure you that at the opening committee for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, this is a major topic.
Okay, all right. And then just, I guess my last question, just kind of going off of what Mike was talking about the, the IAR testing. You know, the, I understand why the superintendents in the state of Illinois did not want to participate in that, and I just wanted to give you a, a moment to explain this because... participate in that, and I just wanted to give you a moment to explain this, because it wasn't that, listen, we know that a lot of, or some of, majority of, you know, it's a term here, we know that there was some learning loss. No one's denying that, right? But it was my understanding why the superintendents for the state of Illinois, the majority of them, you know, 95% of them, wanted to opt out of that I A R testing, was because that test really doesn't get us back great data points that our teachers can really use to help their students. We have other tools for that. I guess that's, so that's my first thing that I want reassurance on. And then, you know, the actual testing itself, with it taking so much time, our teachers and our administration really wanted those days to be used for instruction, especially since that test isn't getting us really good data anyway. And I just wanted you to have a chance to explain that.
You said it perfectly. The superintendents, and there were more than four, more than 400 superintendents in the state of Illinois who signed off on the document. We were concerned about, one, when we get the results, because it takes forever to get the results back, to address anything that could happen this school year. And two, the amount of instructional time lost due to testing. And because of those two main reasons, that is why. We have other means by which we can determine what our students have learned or might not have learned this year through other assessments that we can give that are more timely. And so that is why we were pushing for a waiver this year, and not just the state of Illinois, other states are pushing for that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Board member Rising on that also. I mean, there was a reason why you're seeing them on Monday, 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 Monday. We did that before this guidance came out on March 9th. So we were trying to set those up on days that weren't going to be the same days that we were already offering in-person learning, because we didn't want to change those in-person days all of a sudden into testing days. So we were intentional on those Mondays, and that all occurred before this March 9th. So we're glad that some of those we were able to shorten, because it went from six feet to three feet, and we could, instead of taking more Mondays, we could get them done in a shorter amount of Mondays. But still, it's almost impossible to change it from those Mondays, and that's why we were doing that in the first place.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then just, so briefly, you know, two meetings ago, we had a return to school presentation, and I had mentioned some John Hopkins numbers. I just wanted to say that I misinterpreted those wrong, so, Mr. Akarius especially, I kind of put you on the spot. So I just wanted to, you know, I think it's important for me as a school board member and as an elected official to admit that, you know, I did get that wrong, so I just wanted to publicly apologize that I was reading those numbers wrong and didn't do the math right. So that's the first thing. The second thing regarding that meeting, I'm glad the CDC and IDPH decided to take my advice and not align to the six feet. No, I'm just joking. They did listen to me, but I'm glad that recognized, and those medical organizations. And listen, hey, everybody interprets data differently, and everybody reads things differently, and there's enough studies out there. But at the end of the day, the board and districts still need to align to something. So, you know, I'm glad IDPH did that, is what I'm getting to. However, what I'm not happy with, and I was talking to Ms. Rosenbloom about this, is I'm actually quite angry with IDPH and ISB, quite frankly, that they did not give school districts a heads up on their latest change of the three feet, and I want to apologize to our community. Had we known that was going to happen, we wouldn't have been in full process of our second plan of going back, and then we just had to re-change that whole plan, and the administration went into full readjusting mode. So, you know, it's easy in our community to throw the word around transparency, and people aren't being transparent about this or transparent about that. But the fact of the matter is, regardless if you want to believe it or not, this board has been extremely transparent in everything we have done. And I will point to some examples. Board goal number one says, return students to in-person instruction safely as soon as possible. And August 10th, we passed a resolution that said, because of board goal one, that the superintendent is authorized to modify plans from time to time in alignment with the guidelines of, you know, IDPH, the Illinois State Board of Education, and so on and so forth. This, and I think it's important to explain that the Board of Education does not run the day-to-day operations of a school. We are not school district operations experts. We hire a superintendent, we delegate to the superintendent, and give him authority to run the operations of the schools. He delegates to his administration. That is exactly what we have done through this whole process. And quite frankly, if didn't do, and we would have had to vote on every single plan, it would have delayed things. Because the guidelines that just came out from IDPH, administration would have to present them to us, we would have to pass them tonight, and chances are, they, it would be well after spring break that we would be able to implement them, because things could change from the board right here. So in reality, it could have even delayed things longer if we would have been voting on things, and I'm glad we did things the way we did. So that's all I wanted to say, and thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Rising. Board member Grover.
Thank you to the administration, staff, principals for, you know, getting our kids back to school safely. I know people really, the in-person learning is so valuable. My concern was with the teachers' comfortability in doing the rooming and zooming, as well as the Zoomers for elementary school specifically. I'm glad you talked about the equipment and training for the teachers, because I know that was a huge concern with the Zoomers, would they be able to hear, would the teacher engage with them? So I'm glad we have the second adult there to work with both, and I'm glad that they're going to be working with both sets, so it's not just focused on the Zoomers. The other thing that was a concern was the Zoom time. So I like the breakdown that you showed, showing that they're not just going to be, the Zoomers aren't going to be zooming all the time, because that was a huge concern with the parents. One of the parents had a suggestion, and I know in middle school, we have daily, you can sign up for daily Google Classroom, you get weekly reminders what's happening, and there's something called daily slide schedule in elementary school. I don't know if parents sign up for that, or how, because then they would know what's coming up. Do you know anything about that, or?
We haven't talked about that, to my knowledge, but I can certainly bring it up with our CNI team and Brian Givernini.
Okay, great. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the lunch. I'm glad you brought up the lunch and the breakdown and what work you've done on the lunch, because I know a lot of parents had concern with high school, why can't we do lunch? Or in middle school, why can't we do lunch? So thank you for focusing on that. Slide 13. There is, if you see on the right side, social studies, you just have to change the timing on the right.
Oh, yep, you're right. Thank you. Good catch. Yes, thank you.
And then for Dr. Tally, we had, you had mentioned the committees, and I know one of the, you know, emails sometimes we get is, how are these committees formed, especially the parents? If you can speak to that.
So we talked about talking with different parents, so as part of the surveys that'll go out, one of the things we'll put on there is, if you're interested in being part of this group, please let us know and check on the survey, and then we can randomly select parents from those groups, so that we have a representation of both those who are in-person and those who are remote learners.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, board member Grover. Board member Peel.
I really, when the announcement came out, I was very, very concerned about the Zoomers. And you have really done a great job of putting my angst and calming it down. I'm hoping our families, we're listening carefully, because I think the, you know, we saw so many great suggestions, sound like great ideas. I don't think our system's set up to be as flexible as we would like in order to do some of those. And I think your point about the core curriculum not being able to really, if you put it all together, you are losing that one-on-one instruction, you're losing that practice time with the teacher. It really, everything makes sound logic and reason in putting the plan together. So I really appreciate it. I know there's been concern from parents that Zoom is more tiring, and I think your explanation that hopefully we're breaking it up is also hopefully helpful and assuring to some of our families, because we also have the families who are worried that the mask wearing is going to be too tiring for our students. So I'm hoping that all these break times will start to help the families and the kids, of course, have a true experience of learning, whether they're in Zoom or they're in-person. So I really do appreciate everything that you guys put together. And I guess the direction for families to, is that if they have problems, they need to go to their teacher or their administrator and try to work through whatever the issues are, and so that they know that too. I'm hoping sometimes maybe we have to just work with some students, because that's just the way our schools are. We have to work with each student individually. And I just want to say, this has been the longest three years in one year that I've ever experienced, and I can't imagine what it has been like for you guys and for all our staff. I know I am exhausted, and I'm not doing half the stuff that you guys are doing and our staff are doing. So it's exhausting, it's exhausting to be on Zoom all day long, it's exhausting to not see your kids, it's exhausting when you do see the kids, it's, everything is exhausting. So I really appreciate everything you guys have done, and that's all I have to say. So thank you so much.
Thank you, board member Peel. Board member Demme.
Just first, thank you. Am I on?
Bring it in.
Can you hear me now? First, thank you so much to all of our staff and our teachers, just unbelievable focus, unbelievable commitment to our students, to our families, and to each other. And the opportunity for our staff to have the professional development, I think, on the elementary side is just going to mean so much, and will preferably make a, you know, be a difference for our students. What they're going to learn will be very much reflective for our students. Slide 11, as we had, you shared that the opportunity for our students who are remote in order to speak with them, is that slide, yeah, it's slide 12, I'm sorry. Slide 12. ACE time. So how, when, we said that they'll have a chance to, will they need to sign, it says they'll need to sign up. How will, as far as our younger students, just parents needing to come in and sign up for those opportunities, or do we have any flexibility?
Are you talking about the ACE time?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So will, you know, if there's something, if, let's say that there's time that happens to be free, and somebody didn't anticipate, will that be available, or?
Yes, we believe so. So we are building the schedule right now, but we do believe it'll be around a three-hour window each evening, and that we will have several, like, primary teachers and several intermediate teachers kind of manning the Zoom, but the Zoom link will always be the same, just so that it's not hard for any family member to find, like, once they have it, they know it, and it'll be universal, and they'll be able to access, and then we can either scale up or scale down the number of staff that we need to be able to support that. And just in terms of staff, it is completely voluntary, meaning if a staff member would like to participate and is available, they can. And then obviously, there will be compensation for it, but we'll look at it for the last eight weeks, so April 13th until June 4th, and we'll get a schedule out for that soon. And information to families to sign up, that kind of thing.
And may I just add one more thing about the ACE program? I have seen some emails that have said, well, Teacher A may not know what's happening in my child's classroom, how might I be, how might my child learn or gain a benefit from it? One of the great things about going around from school to school and classroom to classroom is seeing how the teachers at specific grade levels are lock, stock, and in line with each other with regards to the curriculum and what they're teaching, and that is extremely helpful. The other thing I would add to that is, a teacher is a teacher is a teacher. He or she is able to take what a child presents, even though they may not have worked with that child before, and be able to work with them and tutor them, just like a tutor that one would hire after school is someone who comes in, sees what a child is working on, and is able to do something to support that child going forward.
Thank you. You know, I'm happy that you really answered, just as both Natasha, Ms. Peel, and Ms. Grover indicated earlier, the zooming was a large concern, because we had talked so much about that and the reasons that we were making the other decisions. So the explanations, and again, you know, parents that are finding or having concerns, definitely questions, please, please contact your teacher. But I, you know, hope that our teachers, they're so resilient that as they move forward, that this is going to be an opportunity that will, certainly will allow them to garner some new skills, and I'm happy that we're going to have additional personnel in the classroom, because I think that is going to be crucial to help the Zoomers get that additional attention. So that, your explanation helped relieve a good part of my concern, so thank you.
Thank you, board member Demme. Board member Donahue.
So everybody said quite a few things that I would have said, but I personally want to thank all of the administration and staff and families for this adoption of change, and change is hard, and we've been in a mode of pretty constant change this year, so I recognize how difficult this is for everyone, and I appreciate the ability to go with the flow here. I was very happy when the change came out about the three feet, and also eliminating limitations on 50 in a room, because that helped eliminate some of the alternate space issues and capacity things that we had going on. I'm happy that we're increasing the number of elementary teaching hours, so, and I'm also happy that we're not changing teachers, because I know that was also looked at, and I think that's very dramatic at this time of year, and I know those teachers know their kids. I, like everybody else, was extremely worried about the Zoomers at the youngest levels, and fully support having that extra staff in there to get additional help to support those students. Are those additional staff, are they all going to be in-person, or are some of them possibly remote?
It'll vary. We do imagine more will be in-person than remote, but we can certainly make it possible either way.
Okay. Also, we had a consent agenda item on tents, so can we, can someone talk about what those tents might be used for? So can we, can someone, uh, talk about what those tents might be used for?
Yeah. Um, so for lunch, we are being very creative. It does again depend on how many students we have in person at each school. Again, we range from anywhere from 42% to 82% and then the amount of space that we have available. And as you said, wow, not having to abide by the 50-person limit has helped. Um, but also as Mr. Hillman pointed out, like there is still limited space. So the outdoor tents would give us an opportunity to have additional, obviously pending weather, um, but additional seating outside for students that could be used for lunch, but also could even be used for learning, to come outside and do or read aloud or to do some of their joy of reading time or other things where they can come outside, sit six feet apart and be able to take their masks off as well.
Um, I also was happy to hear about the additional equipment that's going in the rooms for sound, because we hear that often, that the, um, students can hear the teacher, but maybe not the other students. So hopefully those, um, job bros will help make that, um, better for them. But I will echo what everyone else said, like this is again, a big change for our families, something that we're, you know, concerned about, but have faith that our teachers are, um, gonna pull this together and make a, a excellent experience for all the students. But if your student is struggling, they need to contact the teacher and the building staff to help, you know, get things changed to help support their student. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, board member Donahue. My comments, um, to Mr. Ecarius. Um, I regret, we have a 37-page slide and I'm going to complain about not having like a little bit more in here. Um, I think we need to do some more planning with the community use of our school facilities. Um, I'm not seeing that on this plan. We're starting to plan towards summer and we're starting to plan towards the, the next school year. And so, uh, in no way saying that we need to open up our buildings tomorrow to all of our rentals or community organizations, um, but we could put it on the plan so that they can plan. Um, board policy 8:20 deals with the community use of our school facilities. And it talks about our buildings being, um, available for community organizations so, so long as it doesn't interfere with our school functions or affects the safety of our students and staff. So I think we've gotten to a point, um, with the various mitigation measures, um, that we could put that on our plan and at some future point. Uh, there's a lot of organizations in the community that have, uh, taken hits, uh, trying to manage their situation as well. We've had longstanding relationships with, with some of them. Um, and it's important for, and it's intergovernmental. It's Park Districts, Vapor Ville, Fox Valley.
Can I mention just briefly? Uh, we, we did start to, um, uh, work with our vendors on outside of our facility rental use. We've also been having our conversations about starting to see what opportunities we, opportunities we have over the summer to extend that to in our buildings. Um, with our increased, um, amount of time with, uh, summer learning, um, you know, we are trying to make sure that we can balance that appropriately with, um, what space can be utilized that's inside as well as what we're going to be using for some of those learning opportunities and then to continue that, um, into the fall. So we are working through that right now, um, and we can, um, make sure that we include that in future communication as well.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. Forgot. So I forgot, I forgot to mention too, that one thing I think all of our board members do is talk to other board members in other, um, suburbs or whatever. And I, I was, um, comforted a bit to hear other districts that have done room in Zoom for the elementary, um, children all day and feel they've done it successfully, including District 203. So, um, I'm, I'm hopeful and cautiously watching. So thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Next on our agenda is, uh, legislation, legislative advocacy and a board of education update. Considering the time, unless somebody has something pressing or time sensitive, I would like to skip over this.
I'm just going to say something quick. So I did go to the LUN meeting and, um, everyone should have received the materials, but there is good information in there about the American Recovery Act and the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund Fact Sheet. And, um, also there's, uh, material in there on the bridge to Phase 5 for the state of Illinois. So I would highly encourage you to look at that. And I think, um, expectation is we will get funding fairly rapidly and it's about 2.2 times what we got in January, which I believe, Dr. Tally, you told me was going to be about 6.5 million. So, and that it ha, it can be used from last March expenses until 2023.
Thanks for, for attending that and that report. That's, that's good information. Anyone else?
Um, were you going to move to adjourn right away or no?
Do you have anything you want to add on the legislation?
Well, I, I, I guess it falls under legislation. I just wanted to remind people that our next meeting is August, or I'm sorry, April 12th and there is an election on April 6th. And I hope people research the candidates and please go vote for school board candidates.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.